Call this meeting of the City Commission to order. Commissioner Monica Moran will be joining us by phone tonight. Will you please stand for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Open the meeting to public input. Is there anyone out there in the audience would like to come forward, state your name and address, and speak on your concerns?
My name is Stephen Melnick. My address is 4064 North Parkview Drive, Frontenac, Kansas. Commissioners, I thank you for the opportunity to make this statement. I am a member of the Pittsburgh Area Property Owners Association. I am here on behalf of homeowners and citizens in the community respectfully requesting that you table the VASINO group proposal until it has been fully reviewed as far as the cost impact upon the community. Some questions have been raised regarding the project, namely what housing study are they basing their numbers off of? This seems like a temporary increase in building permits, but what will be the result five years down the road? What will the impact be on the existing apartment complexes and homeowners? The proposed residents are college students, most going into debt to further their education. This is not an instance of if you build it, they will come. The departure of educated, business-minded individuals will continue. How long is it going to take to recruit the funds that are going to be laid out for this proposal? As citizens in this community, we are not against this project in totality. We are against the city putting forth taxpayer money to entice an outside firm. A better bet would be to tell the local nonprofits there is a pool of money available to help remodel low-income houses and let them determine which homes need the work. Once again, I thank the commission for the opportunity to speak and implore them to delve deeper into the numbers and possible outcome of this project.
Thank you. Are there any others in the audience to speak on any other concerns? Please come forward at this time, state your name and address. Seeing none, I close this portion of the meeting to public input and move on to consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none.
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion and a second to approve. Roll call vote.
Gray.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ketterman.
Aye.
Muncel.
Aye.
Moran.
Aye.
Moving on to special presentation, street sales tax program. Director of Public Utilities, Matt Bacon, and Director of Public Works, Cameron Alden, will provide a presentation on the 2015 and 2016 street sales tax program.
Good evening. He's already got it. All right. Tonight, we just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of catch up some of the projects that we worked on last year through the street sales tax program and kind of make everyone aware of the projects moving forward this year. Some of our last year projects, we spent approximately $950,000 out of the street sales tax budget. Our big projects of last year was the West Fourth Clink project, roughly $300,000. We did the Twin Lakes Edition was another large project in which we subcontracted out. Our crews self-performed Pine Street from 4th to 10th, Random Makers, Random Courts, and then a lot of other small projects from there. That was kind of our big projects. Oops. Just a few overview projects. I don't think you can see the cracking. The aerial view of the failures that you could see from the streets was what I was going for there, but I think it lost a little. Random Makers Court. Here are odds and ends. Currently, we're working on West Jefferson. The project will consist from Broadway all the way to Georgia. We're currently going from Walnut to about Catawba. It's a project where since we did not have a bad winter, that our crews were able to jump on early this year and start doing, there's a lot of, on a project like that where we're stripping asphalt off the brick, we're doing, we're trying to stretch our dollars by stripping asphalt ourselves without milling, without having an outside miller come in. It's a project that where we have to repair, once we strip the asphalt off, we come back and repair the flagstone curb, put in our ADA ramps. Our crews are all doing that in-house. So, and as soon as it warms up a little bit more and we approve where we're going to purchase asphalt, we'll start paving it back. This year, the West Jefferson project is budgeted roughly around $125,000. Other projects that we're looking at this year is Ralph Street from Quincy South to the railroad tracks, West 20th from Pine to the bypass, miscellaneous concrete repairs including East Jefferson in the Pearl, Norris, Knollview area in a resident, in some of the residential, miscellaneous concrete panels where they've spalled and cracked loose. We're also looking at some Reclamite projects for projects that we've done at the beginning of our sales tax program from five years ago that we're looking to elongate the life of those projects. We've done the Reclamite project, it's been a year or two since they've done a Reclamite project here, but we're, it is something that we have done in the past. Gives us a chance to rejuvenate the asphalt and get a longer wear out of what we've already done. So, projects for that would be Walnut Street from 5th all the way down to 20th that we've done, and 7th Street going through there.
With Reclamite, some of the things that make it a good candidate is you want a road that's only been recently rebuilt or repaved. If you can kind of imagine what you're looking at doing with that is you're trying to keep moisture in the cake, if you will. If you've got a freshly baked cake and you sit there, you know, push on it, it'll bounce back. What happens with asphalt is, is as that, the oils evaporate or leave the pavement, it starts to drought, become more brittle. And so when it goes and you have a heavy load on it and it flexes, it does not bounce back anymore. What Reclamite is, is it's going in there and it's putting in those oils back into the roadway to help try and keep that rejuvenated or refreshed in there so it can keep that flexibility, which is its main purpose and how it maintains its strength. And so this is a process or an extension that's been looked at and being used more and more often, and we're getting in, I think we've done one or two years of it in the past. We want to try and see if it's a viable tool to continue moving forward because this is going to be at a fraction of the cost of what would be to repave a street. So, as we continue to see good success with it, we'll expand that program just to try and do this about every five years. Once you put an application of the Reclamite on, you go back in and again in five years do the same thing, try and keep that lifespan extended as much as possible.
Where's some, is it Ford, maybe Centennial where we did that last time?
We did Ford, and then East Fourth had some on as well. Is there a timeframe after you pave a road that you use this?
Usually it's, you give it at least one year. Usually that second year, I think, is the most ideal is kind of what they've said. You can do it up to roads as old as five years, but really your benefits really falling off that point in time. It's kind of, kind of like with cake, you know, if you pour water after it's already dried out, it's just not the same.
What is the cost of a lane mile to do that?
It's a, it's, a turnkey project is roughly a dollar fifty a square yard.
And the city does this themselves?
No. It's done by an outside contractor. They're, in the past, it's been done by a contractor out of El Laredo that has come in. It looks like a big tackle wheel truck that comes down that puts the product down, then they lay the sand over to soak up the extra product and we clean it up and go on. It looks just like that. It's a spray application.
Do we do the cleaning up ourselves, or is that?
We can, we did in the past.
Okay.
How much does it extend the life of the road versus if you didn't do it at all?
You're probably looking about five years for each application is kind of what the theory is behind it. That's what they've been able to find in other places and we'll see if it works for here as well.
And so an untreated road, like if you just, like the ones that you had mentioned on 7th and Walnut Street, if you didn't do them, what's the typical expectation?
Usually you're looking about 15 years of life where you really have to go in and do some major repair to it. You might have to do some crack sealing and other things to that before that 15-year lifespan's up. For asphalt pavement, it's usually 15 is kind of the upper end of your, or the expected life of the pavement, and you get longer life out of concrete pavement.
Do they use the same process on concrete or just on the asphalt?
This is just asphalt.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Hold on. Just a couple of things that we are, if you looked at our project list, the next big project that we are looking at is another clink project on East Fourth that we've already been approved for from the overpass out to Free Kings Highway that KDOT will help match funds with. So we'll be leveraging our dollars for that project into 2017. And then we are also looking at, as we look at projects, we're really looking at a lot of arterial streets, a lot of heavy traveled. If you look around, if you go down Atkinson or you go down Free Kings, heavy traveled streets, we're trying to address those. We try to, we're trying to get neighborhoods in as well. We are reaching out to both the county and the city of Frontenac to where we own half the lane and they own half the lane. So we're looking at those type projects too to help work on those arterial streets around and interior of town, you know, we can always use more to start addressing neighborhoods and we do have small neighborhoods we're trying to get as well. Our street sales tax plan for, that we proposed on the five-year, we're starting, we're following the implementation of that, so.
When are you going to start paving Jefferson? Are you about done with the?
Jefferson Street, we are currently, the plan will be, we've stripped off from, we've went from Walnut down to Catawba and now we've went from Catawba on down to Elmwood. We've went back into full-depth asphalt, but we're going to continue over the next week or two to put the handicap ramps in and replace the flagstone curb and do that small miscellaneous concrete work because some of that, whenever we tear that up, some of that flagstone has settled. We've got to get it leveled so we have a nice edge to pave up to, but in the upcoming couple of weeks, we'll be ready to, we'll be ready to start laying that part of it back down.
Thanks. Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Consider the following deposition of bids. Bids were received on Tuesday, March 15th, 2016 for the provision of asphalt concrete material for the 2016 city sales tax street program and the Crawford County Engineering Office consisting of an estimated combined total of 17,750 tons as aspetic concrete and surface mix. Staff will provide a verbal recommendation for award of bid.
Just like last year, we went to bid in combination with the county to maximize our tonnage and reduce our possible startup cost on a plant. And this year, just like last, we're recommending award to Heckerd Construction. They are close and local. Their bid, their bid was in line, and whenever we figured out our mileage to travel, the low bidder was out of Quapaw. But when you figure up the mileage and add to that, to our turnaround radius for asphalt, we recommend award to, in conjunction with the county, to recommend award to Heckerd Construction.
Questions?
I'm going to approve.
Approve and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All upon the same sign. Thank you. Thank you. Consider the following. We've had a request tonight to table the consideration for the downtown redevelopment project. Is there a motion to table this until further time that more can be explained to property owners? I make a motion to table it. There a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Moving on to Vencio Group Downtown Redevelopment Project. Consider the recommendation of the Economic Development Advisory Committee to provide 1.5 million to the Vencio Group to support a transformation downtown redevelopment project to involve four historic downtown buildings with $750,000 to be paid upfront with the remaining $750,000 to be paid in 2017.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a project that truly would be transformative for our downtown, would involve four buildings at 4th and Broadway. Total investment would be approximately $15 million. Based on that, the EDAC is recommending 1.5 million from the RLF. That would represent 10% of the project investment. You're going to hear more details from Matt Burton from the VASINO group here in just a moment, but first I believe Darren wanted to maybe explain exactly how the city got connected with the VASINO group. As mentioned in the agenda item request, the VASINO group is one of the nation's leading redevelopment experts. They've got well over 100 projects in their portfolio. We've seen them firsthand. The EDAC was very excited about not only what this would do for the downtown area, but for how transformative it would be for our entire economy. But with that, I will ask Darren to kind of bring us to where we are now and how we got connected with the VASINO group.
Thanks, Blake. Yeah, just a quick background. It's been a long road for us. Obviously, we have a housing community development director now. We send her to many towns and conferences to connect with people and get ideas. One of our highest priorities is housing. Another high priority is downtown. A third priority is preservation of existing buildings, and as you know, there's a couple of buildings, more than a couple downtown that could use some attention. So Becky's aware of all that. She was fortunate to attend the right conference or the right room or walked into the right meeting, struck up a conversation with an individual. They were talking about a different subject matter, but as they started talking about historic preservation in Pittsburgh, they started swapping names and she was told she ought to talk to somebody. Eventually, she ran into Matt Burton. He's a former Pitt State grad. His company does projects like this. They made the connection, came back to Pittsburgh, and when they talked to Pittsburgh and the city, you know, obviously we were very excited. The idea of, I think I've been approached by at least three companies locally in the four years that I've been here that have had ideas or plans for the National Bank Building, for example, but every time you put pen to paper, you find out that it's extremely expensive. It's obviously something that you could, you could fix and you could put enough money in to turn those buildings around, but then you have to make a profit to pay off that investment, and it's very difficult to do that. So, we just didn't have the wherewithal to pull that out. The beauty of Matt's company was this is what they do. And I think as he walks you through the multiple building concept, you can start to see the economies of scale and why achieving something like this is doable when us just looking with our tunnel vision at a building at a time and trying to do it with local money is extremely difficult. So, the key to this whole thing coming together was as we're working with VASINO and they're running the idea by us, this city just is not in the business of housing. We own some land, we'd sure like to give it to somebody, develop some housing. We do a lot of housing inspections. We did a little bit over at Lincoln Square and helped with 10 houses going in over there, but for the most part, we really needed an anchor tenant. We needed somebody to step up and commit to making this work. Obviously, there's a limited number of those in the community. We initially went to Pitt State and although they had just built out some dorms, they'd put a lot of money into there. It was, it's such a great opportunity to take $15 million and put it back into downtown into those historic buildings that are right at the corner of 4th and Broadway that I don't know what, I don't know how it'll finally go, but where we are today is we're at a point in the process where we need to make, we needed to make it a commitment, and we've given it to EDAC twice, and they came back with the recommendation that you have before you tonight. So, just wanted to give you that backup and say thanks. I think you're going to hear more from Pitt State and VASINO in the future about how the actual deal goes down, and tonight you're going to hear from VASINO about what the actual plan is. But I'd be happy to answer any question when Matt's done, and that's a little precursor to how we got here tonight. Matt?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak. So, as Karen mentioned, my name's Matt Burton. I'm with the VASINO group, and we're a fully integrated development company. That means we do sort of all the traditional development and have in-house architecture and construction, the sort of whole gamut of activities involved with the project. And feel like, you know, sort of the real genesis of our company was we were sort of created by people who had had a lot of experience and success in the development world prior and wanted to do a different sort of work. And so founded this company really based on the idea of housing that would have a tangible impact in communities and really inspire the people working on it with a sense of higher purpose. So, we're pretty selective in the types of projects that we want to be a part of. So, we were approached by the city of Pittsburgh and, you know, our principal sort of reaction at first was a bit timid. These are difficult projects, but it just so happened that I was from Pittsburgh, and as we learned a bit more about it, we thought that this was certainly an opportunity to sort of fit our mission, but just as much it was a project that was important to me and it felt like it was a real opportunity to give back. So, the conversation and the sort of challenge and opportunity that fueled this was really first and foremost around the National Bank Building. And on one hand, the opportunity was to help improve a pretty, if not the most historic building in the city of Pittsburgh. So those of you who don't know, this was the Pittsburgh Opera House originally. Built in 1890, really at the heart sort of of Pittsburgh, and it's vacant now and it's a bit of a fire hazard. And so, we like being a part of projects like this, but they're complicated and they're expensive. And so, as we started thinking about that opportunity and challenge, what was important to us was to sort of make clear that we wanted to be about more than just finding a way to preserve an old building. We wanted to be a part of a project that was about stimulating progress. And as the conversation evolved from there, we couldn't sort of help but think about the idea of intersection for some obvious reasons and then sort of philosophical reasons. And as we started thinking about the idea of intersection and how different things come together, the conversation then led to the idea of the university and community. There's already a super strong relationship, but how could, with the city being involved with this project, how could we potentially engage the university in a way that would help make it successful? And that led us then to thinking about the idea of an actual intersection. So while the bank building sort of was the start of this project, we took a step back and said, you know, to make this work, it's going to have to be something that has some larger economies of scale. We started thinking about the intersection of 4th and Broadway as a destination and sort of how it looks today, and there was really four buildings that framed our focus, and all four of them are completely vacant in the top section of the buildings. One of them is occupied at the bottom. And so as we thought about 4th and Broadway today, we couldn't help but think back about 4th and Broadway sort of at the start of Pittsburgh, and this was literally how the city was born at this intersection. And so that building that you're looking on on the right with the turret, that's the National Bank Building and then the Crowe Building to the left. And so that led us thinking about where 4th and Broadway was and the role that it played in the start of this city and where it sits today, and the role that it could play in a new sort of future for downtown Pittsburgh and how the university and community could come together and make that happen. And so this was the concept that we came up with for how 4th and Broad might look in the future. And you can see again, it involves four buildings, the National Bank Building, the one to the north of it, and the two Crowe Buildings to the left. The project really would be comprised of two components. First, housing. So the upper floors of all four buildings would be micro-efficiency studios. We think we can get between 100 to 110 beds in that space, which is important because again, there's a certain expense that goes into renovating these buildings, and if you can't get enough beds in there, you can't make it work financially, and if we can't get enough bodies downtown, we don't start to tip the scale. So we think we've got a critical mass with 100, and we think the concept's going to be very popular with students based on our experience. This is an example of something similar that we've designed in Springfield. And that, and that some people from the city have come to see as well. The second component is the commercial space, and we're going to focus first on the lower level of the two buildings on the east. And the idea is that would be space for the university to create a presence downtown and sort of connect and close that distance between South Broadway and 4th and Broad. Just so happens that the university is going through a renovation of Kels coming up, and we thought there was a real connection, again, an intersection of opportunity between that and sort of what could happen with this space. And so the plan, working with the university, is to take all of their small business and economic development initiatives and house those in this space so that they're more visible and more accessible to the community, as well as to use this redevelopment as an opportunity to build out those programs and expand those to include things such as a business incubator or other community-oriented space that's going to help drive small business development. Just some inspiration for how that space might work. So some of the basics, there's four buildings involved. You can sort of see the square footage numbers there, and again, the top are going to all be residential and the bottom is all commercial. And as of right now, the two buildings on the east are all going to be occupied by the university, and the buildings on the west, we're still determining how that commercial space will be used, but as of now, the Crowe Pharmacy will stay, will stay in that space. And just to clarify, that would be completely leased by the university, so that housing, as well as the commercial space, would all be operated by the university. So they would incorporate that housing into their housing portfolio, and they would be the ones leasing that to students. And so what it does for the university is allow them to round out that portfolio from dorms to this sort of middle-tier sort of semi-suite category to now full-blown apartments. From a basic timeline standpoint, given that we approached the university sort of as the core with the city as the sort of core anchor tenant, we agreed to create a period of working with them to sort of do some due diligence to make sure we could develop the project in a way that would work for them, and we're doing that right now. So that's sort of January through April. Assuming we continue to move forward from there, we would sort of plan contracts and closing and all of that sort of stuff sometime over the summer with the sort of plans and permitting process happening September through December. We've got lots of time for construction because we need to time the project to coincide with the academic year. So we'd start construction sometime the end of this year, early the following year, with the opening occurring sometime between May to August 18. So either sort of at the start of summer or right at the start of the fall semester. One of the things that's both compelling and challenging about this project is the complication of being able to make it work. So one of the reasons that some of the principals in our group were a bit hesitant at first is because projects like this are expensive and difficult to do, and we've had some experience with that. There's a lot of small towns that look around and say, well, why doesn't somebody do something with this, or wouldn't it be cool if we had that? And it doesn't usually happen. One of the reasons is because of the intricacies involved in doing a project like this, and to make it work takes a lot of people with shared interest coming together and finding a way to contribute that gets bigger leverage. And so this is just sort of an overview, and I know it's maybe hard to read, I'll walk you through that, of what it sort of takes to make a project like this work. So first of all, potential investment from the city into the project. We're also going to have to use historic tax credits and look for other incentives. The university's committed to raising philanthropic contributions to support it. As a developer, we're giving up a big piece of the way that we normally seek to make money in a project just because the opportunity isn't here. So normally, we're looking to make money by managing the project, then through annual cash flow, and then having an asset that has equity that we can sell. And so our goal and our commitment, and my commitment personally, was let's find a way to make this project work so that the income from the housing basically matches the lease that the university would pay. So we give up that cash flow and we'll, and we'll give the property back to the university at the end of that lease. So in addition to that, then we're still going to have to find private financing and the university's going to have to sign a long-term lease for that space. So you can see there's a lot of pieces of this puzzle that everyone sort of has to contribute to make this work. So that adds a lot of complication to it, but I think it also really speaks to the opportunity here and this sort of sense of shared interest. And everyone has been really great from the city to the university to business leaders to sort of recognizing, I think, the opportunity and importance of this space and being willing to say, you know what? to say, you know what, I would do my part to help make this happen. And, and each group has a reasonable contribution they can make, but the leverage they're getting from that is so much larger. So that's the sort of basic overview of the project. We're really grateful as a company to be involved with it. We feel like that's our mission personally. I'm really grateful to be involved. We are incredibly excited about it and we think it's going to be hugely transformational for the community. Darren, commissioners, any questions?
I have a few for Darren.
Yes, sir.
How much money is in the revolving loan fund?
About $3 million.
$3 million. We're going to take half of that for this project.
No, there's $3 million in today. We'd pay 750 and then the other 750 would be in 2018 when the project is finished.
Another question I had, you know, mentioned about need for housing in town. Some of our apartment complexes is recently built close to the college. Are they at capacity?
No, I don't know. Blake's, I don't know.
The college has their own student housing. Are, are their units at capacity?
Pretty certain the university's at capacity. And this, this would be a piece of their housing.
I have another question since this is for Pitt State. Wouldn't it be better to ask Pitt State for the 1.5 million instead of using revolving loan funds for this project?
Sir?
Yeah, so Pitt State's going to make the largest, I just want to be clear that we approached the university because we felt like in order for this to happen on behalf of the community, it needed a tenant. So we just passed on working on a similar project like this in Rochester, New York. It was a really great area right in the heart of downtown. It was a very large project. But to make that kind of investment without any kind of anchor tenant, just it's awfully risky. And so we approached the university as the way to sort of stabilize this project. And just to be clear, they're making the lion's share of the investment. So they've committed first to raising somewhere, you know, in the million and a half to $3 million range at least as a target. And then they're going to be the anchor tenant. So they're going to sign the long-term lease, which is the bulk then of the financing that happens.
I know I looked in the phone book and there's approximately over 20 businesses in the phone book that are in the apartment business and the home rental business. And a lot of our small business owners in town that operate these apartments and rent houses are struggling to provide housing for our economy of our town. I feel that this would be an unfair burden on these property owners because they do rent property to Pitt State students. And I think that, that will take some of their business from the people that pay into this revolving loan fund tax. I think it's great that Vincio Group wants to invest in Pittsburgh. I would like to see that work. But I think that we'd be better off using revolving loan funds to help local businesses and attract new business that pay a wage that's to support a family in our town. And that's, that's my, my stance on it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I have a clarifying question for Darren. Are there stipulations attached to the, our investment of the 750,000 a year from the loan fund?
We, we only invest when the closing happens. So assuming they can pull the deal off, that would be the first increment of 750,000. And then assuming they get the whole thing built and it opens, that would be the second one. This isn't a, this is an investment into jobs. This is an investment into a business. This is a matching 10% basically of a $15 million investment with money from out of town to preserve two historic, four historic buildings and to generate the livelihood and the housing and the economic development opportunity that we've been trying to do downtown, as well as all the other areas of town. And it's, it's something that quite frankly, local money hasn't been able to provide this kind of opportunity. And the EDAC saw as an opportunity to invest in it on the merits of its economic development and what it would do to the downtown community and not for, you know, traditionally, we loan money for jobs and capital investment. So I think that's probably, I'd hate to speak for the, the EDAC, but that was the general discussion was how would we not invest in this? And so what is the appropriate amount? And I think they thought 10% of the overall value would be something that they could do and that they could only do it if they hit the milestones of A, closing and B, constructing. So.
What's the long-term lease term?
The length? It'll be somewhere around 20 years.
So, so we're, we're essentially with finding a tenant that's going to guarantee that that space will be populated for 20 years?
Yes, sir.
With, what's, and I don't know who the best person is to do this, but I would like someone to at least try to address some of the specific questions that were raised in public input and then maybe by check in terms of the capacity. And I think it's worth us addressing and talking about primarily in terms of, you know, the issue that had been addressed, addressed with me privately was an issue of whether the information that we had from the housing study was outdated, whether it was, you know, something that we could still rely upon, if somebody could address that. And also address whether we've done any kind of cost of what the impact of this will do economically in Pittsburgh over the time period, whether we've done any impact analysis or anything that you guys could elaborate on. I mean, I do think that there is a good argument that this will address jobs and economic development because part of what we're going to try to do is, is foster development of small business through business incubators so that we can hopefully create the new small businesses that will want to stay in Pittsburgh long-term. And I'm assuming, I can imagine if Pitt State's leasing the entire space, that they will ensure that the other commercial spaces on the west side will be populated by businesses that create sales tax. But if somebody could address the issues that have been raised on those concerns, that would be helpful, I think, for us and for the people that might be watching in terms of what impact this truly has and whether we think that there's going to be an excess of a, an issue of excess supply.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would say, and I don't know the answer to the current occupancy rates of our other complexes. The EDAC also took into account that there's really nothing like this in Pittsburgh currently. The, the growing trends are toward university students wanting to live downtown in the, the micro efficiency units like Matt showed. But to, to be able to, to get those downtown and, and have the capacity to, to make sense and to be able to generate the revenue, it almost has to be one of those buildings. And so in communities like Springfield, which is one of the, the properties that we had the opportunity to, to see firsthand, this not only, this not only brought more residents to the downtown area, but then naturally businesses started popping up next to the developments. So the EDAC was not just looking at the value of just the housing itself, but also getting more foot traffic downtown, which has been a major challenge for us. We've talked to a lot of businesses about going downtown. They look at the commuting patterns. They look at how many people live downtown and they said it's just not there. Being able to bring 110 students downtown would certainly make it much easier to develop the business around it. So I know that doesn't really answer your question as far as a, a hard number and a cost benefit analysis because we, we haven't conducted that. But I know that that was one of the reasons that the EDAC wanted to be so aggressive with this.
Is the Vassino Group involved in helping the tenant, which would be Pitt State in this situation, find businesses to locate to that commercial space? Is that something that you do? Or, or are you more just, we develop, we construct, we get it done, and then we hand it over to the tenant and let them do their thing?
No, our job is to completely sort of help facilitate the entire process. So, and I think you need to know first and foremost, again, because when we're looking at projects, this isn't the sort of traditional financial return that we would seek. So for us, the motivation to be involved with a project like this is it, is it, one, it's on mission and two, sort of gives us a chance to create something that we can show, look what was done. And so the success of this is essential to us. And so, I mean, we spent the afternoon working with a group of architects in Pittsburgh State really figuring out how to use that commercial space. So our job is to sort of help connect all of the dots between the city and the university and the architects and the potential tenants to ensure that that space is designed correctly and filled correctly.
Where would the parking be for 110 students downtown?
Yeah, great question. So we're, that's part of still the final proposal that we're putting together. What I can tell you is there's a lot more parking than even I realized at first. And you can imagine just sort of getting up above the area like in a helicopter and looking, there's probably seven lots within a.
There's five city owned lots within a block in, in several directions. So parking will not be an issue. Now, if you think you're parking in front of your door, that'll be an issue. But there's, there's parking and.
For downtown oriented development, there's a surprisingly large number of parking spaces.
Yeah, when I think about it from student housing standpoint, I mean, I lived in dorms for three years on campus and I never got to park at my door. So, I mean, I, I think that there, I'm not as concerned about the, it's a fair question because I think parking's always a concern downtown because it's not like people generally think that there's an excess of that. But for the typical student, I would think that it might not be as big of an issue if they're already going to be parking away, even if they lived on campus or some other place. But go ahead, Becky.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to address your question about the housing study and whether or not it's outdated. And I would say slightly it is. And in terms of student housing, the, the piece that it's, it's missing is a demographic shift. So the students that are coming to university today, well, let's go back to when I came to university in the early 90s. I shared with four other people. We had one bathroom down the hall that we shared with 30 others and it was just fine. It was fun. Today, students are coming to university raised in households where perhaps they had their own bathroom connected to their bedroom. They didn't have to share. And you see that reflected in the way some of the new developments have happened. So at the edge, you rent a room and a bathroom and you share the middle space. So these micro units that Matt is describing is kind of the next evolution in that where you have a space that's entirely your own and then the communal space is outside in the lobby or, or with other groups. So in terms of outdated, yes. In terms of the development Matt's, Matt's describing, it would fit the, the scenario.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's, I think it also makes us more competitive as a college town as university students are front, especially more of them being from Johnson County, Northwest Arkansas, the more urban areas, and they're looking at where they want to have their college experience. They want developments like this and they want the kind of nightlife that will probably generate around this. So I think it's not, it not only makes Pitt State more competitive, it makes Pittsburgh more competitive as a college town to get those students here in the first place.
And finally, if I can, I wrote down, I think, most of the questions. As far as economic development, you know, that question came up in the EDAC and we talked about, you know, it's the Economic Development Advisory Committee. So obviously, when most of us think about economic development, the first thing I think about are jobs. The other thing we need to think about is capital investment in our community. Capital investment is important because with capital investment, we retain people, we attract people, we generate additional sales tax, we generate more money and allows us to provide more services. So if you look at this, so when the question came up about economic development, the EDAC talked about it and they decided, obviously, we could go out and hire somebody to put together some numbers to show some projections about whatever, whatever we wanted to show. This is going to generate so much economic development. The reality is Pitt State is going to have students come to this community and they are going to live somewhere and they are going to spend money. So whether they live here or somewhere else, it didn't seem like it would be practical or fair to just blow up some numbers and, and walk in with a sheet of a bunch of, with a bunch of numbers. The reason the investment is critical though is because we have an issue downtown. We don't have any money to fix roofs. And every roof downtown, and you're a former firefighter, you know what happens. I mean, the water pours into the building, the fire suppression doesn't exist. So everybody turns around and says, let's get some grant money. There's no, we are one community in a, in a country that has this problem. This entire country has aging infrastructure. So how do we turn this around? How do we get our arms around it if there's no grant money and there's no local money to do it? Well, I tell you how you do it. You leverage people that have money from somewhere else that for whatever reason, because it's the amount of street res servicing or the quality of education they received or the luck of having somebody like Becky in the room doing her job on the road instead of having her fifth lunch and blowing off the conference, talk about the value of your community. And so when you find somebody that is willing to put 13 and a half million dollars into roofs, into sidewalks, into lighting, into parking, into a place for a person to lay their head down, whether it's for the university or anybody else, you take a million and a half dollars and we didn't do it lightly. We didn't, and we're not emptying the coffers by any stretch of the imagination. I think you know, that's, that's never where I'm going to leave us. We've always said there's going to be a million dollars or more in that fund. And this will always make sure there's a million dollars at least in that fund. But it seemed like the right thing to do. It was a conservative number. But how do we not invest to get 13 million dollars into the heart of our community is Fourth and Broadway? I've only been here four years. You saw the slide. This community started here and it will end here one day. And what we can do by this investment is make sure that it doesn't end with a wrecking ball and a big broom and a $2 million bill cleaning up what's left of the Crowe's Building, the National Bank Building and everything around it. This is going to spur investment. It's not money that's coming from us locally. And the EDAC was adamant across the board that this is a project they needed to get behind and they thought a lot about the number. But I do applaud them because they didn't just come up with a spreadsheet with a bunch of economic development impact on what this is going to do because who knows? But we all know if we can spend a dime to get a dollar of money in this community to do basic infrastructure and preserve our buildings, it's something we need to be doing. And I know it's difficult. I know it's a paradigm shift in housing. And before anybody jumps on Pitt State, I want to apologize because we drug Pitt State into this. We went to Pitt State for once and we said, hey, we need you. We need, we need somebody to come in here and do, Pitt State just built out their dorms. They put a huge investment into their community. And so we went to them and said, hey, we need you to step up and, and do a 20-year lease on $9 million. And they were like, for what? And we're like, well, for student housing, of course. And they're like, well, we've already kind of got the student housing down. Yeah, but where are you going to be in 20 years? And that's where they looked at the long-term and thought, we are going to grow. Housing is going to turnover. And, and whether or not they end up doing the deal, I don't know. But, I mean, this may sound like a passionate plea, but I'm telling you, these opportunities don't come around. And it wasn't made lightly. We're not emptying the bank and we're not doing it to punish anybody or make any statement about housing and what the need is. This is just a partnership. It's unique. And the investment of our million and a half is to preserve the core part of our community. And it is for infrastructure. It will be in brick and mortar. It's not going to walk out of the community in 10 years when the tax abatement's done. It's going to be here and it's going to be serving this community for a long, long time. And Matt's done an unbelievable job. I, I don't know what it would have cost us to try to find and then hire a consultant that has the wherewithal, the knowledge and the experience to come up with the way to make this happen. And it all, and we haven't paid for any of that. That's all been out of the, out of the niceness and the willingness to serve by some people that have the opportunity to do that. And I think we should be fortunate, but I appreciate all the questions and hopefully we can continue to answer them. But we don't have a spreadsheet of economic impact of what this is going to do because I don't know what it would look like.
I was just addressing the concerns and the questions that have been raised by, to me or here in person tonight.
It's a good question.
I understand, I understand the thought process behind the project and I understand the impact. I'm certainly not trying to make light of that. I mean, my questions were simply to try to expand on, on helping folks in the, in the community understand the impact and the significance of this project and understand and address some questions that have been raised to me by some folks that were concerned about it and didn't really know much about it. Now, I mean, I, I certainly understand the impact of a 20-year lease and I understand the impact of what Pitt State's committing to there. I mean, it's a significant investment. I don't know that I have any other questions. I mean, I've written down like 10 or 15 things, but I think they've all been, been addressed. I mean, I've written down like 10 or 15 things, but I think they've all been, been addressed in one, one way, shape, or form.
Well, I understand the impact.
I've been talking too much, so somebody else can talk.
Oh, no, I'm not talking.
And I get what you're saying, Darren, this is great. This is great for our community, it's great that Pitt State's involved, but I also understand the impact of people out there that are in the rental business that's going to be a burden on them when they lose some of their profit to go to these, this development. So it might, I understand both sides, and that's where I'm at on it, so.
I think I also understand both sides. I know where the landlords are coming from, but I think, I look at this and I see two choices in this matter. So number one, you don't have people come along way off to want to invest this kind of money in a community, especially a community of this size. So number one, we either do this project or we sit back and wait for these buildings to fall down. We've lost a lot of historic buildings in this town over the years due to fire and stuff, and I don't want to see us lose anymore.
I'd like to say this, is I think I'm the most recent college graduate of the group, I'm not sure, but as someone who went to PSU and kind of grew up here, seeing this like kind of laid out in concept or whatever is mind-bogglingly exciting for me. Like this, I wish that this would have come in when I would be a student, like, a lot of the stuff that PSU has been doing recently with their, the Performing Arts Center and the Plaster Center and all of those things, but seeing that then tied in with the city, not just developing sort of the university on its own over here in the corner by itself, but like paying off in other ways around the community and developing, like you spoke to so well, the historical aspects of the community that are very important clearly for the people that live here, but to see that not just preserved, but then put to use in such a powerful, useful, economically driving way is, is just really thrilling for me. I'm very, very excited that you guys have chosen to be here at all. That's so awesome.
Well, thank you. I mean, I'm a Pittsburgh guy too, so I went to high school and college here, and I feel the same way, and it's been fun to be a part of this and because I know the potential, but I also know how difficult it is. My grandfather ran a store down Fourth Street called Murray's Market for years, and it's gone, it's torn down, and it's just something will happen to these buildings if we don't find a way to use them soon. So.
I hope, you know...
Yes, go ahead, Monica.
I've got a couple things. First of all, it's creative. Secondly, it's collaborative, and I have to address housing. We have to go at it with multiple strategies. If this one strategy is well thought out outside money, I appreciate that. If there are no further questions, I would move to the group.
I'll move to second.
It's moved, then second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, aye. Motion carries 4 to 1.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other non-agenda reports and requests?
Yeah, Mayor, I feel like I need to, I apologize on, this is March, isn't it? On January 26th, we had a group come in here, they were very organized, and they talked under the public input about our current pit bull ordinance, they talked about a vicious dog ordinance that they had maybe in their mind, that's something we needed to consider. They referred to a couple of examples. A short story, you know, we've taken a look at it, I've taken a look at it, I've asked the staff to pull together information. At this time, I don't see, I don't see the need to change the current ordinance. I do understand that it causes some people pain and that this is a tough issue to get on either side of, but just, I just wanted to give some closure at this point and follow-up because it has been coming up on two months now, and, you know, I don't have a recommendation for you of doing anything different than we're currently doing. I'd be willing to take any direction that you have, but I did want to make sure that we responded because all those people took, you know, time out of their night, and they came in here, I know public speaking's not easy, and they were passionate, and they care a lot about those dogs, and a lot of us do too, but I don't see that we have enough information to move off of the current ordinance we have and change to something else. I think we would just be moving the ball from one place to another, and there would still be a hole. So with that, you guys let me know, and Monica, if you need us to do something else or take another look at it somehow, but at this point, I just wanted to make that statement, let people know that we did, we have looked at it, and there's really not a recommendation coming from the staff.
Well, I wouldn't, I would certainly not recommend to move just for the sake of moving. You know, I don't, I don't want to get into that because as soon as we move and make a change, the opposite, the opposition will want us to move back, and, you know, we're never going to make everybody happy. I think the, I've talked to a couple individuals who are in favor of this change, and, you know, one of the things that they keep going after is the idea that, you know, there's really no evidence that, that certain breeds that are included or that would fall under our ordinance have a predisposition for certain types of behavior, and that some of the breeds that don't fall under our current ordinance are actually known as being animals that have more of a disposition for that. For example, German shepherds, other animals that aren't necessarily prohibited. I don't have enough information to really know what's accurate and what's not. I mean, I can Google, but, I mean, as the commercial says, I mean, you never know what's true, I mean, you think it's true because it's on the internet, but good lord, I mean, there's, anybody can say anything there, and so I don't know if we have any information about what other cities have done when confronted with this issue. Are they still holding tight and not moving and still preventing those breeds from being allowed? Are there any cities that you're aware of that are moving off of that and are changing their ordinance back to be more open? I mean, do you have any information that would lead us to believe that that's happening? Or...
No, I think the...
I know, I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
The pit bull, no, I, no, I, I mean, I looked into it. The pit bull breed is just, I think there's one reason there's so much passion for doing something for that breed is because that breed is abused so bad. That breed is prevalent in the shelters, that breed has multiple owners before, at the time, a dog is one, I think the average is that they have three different owners. If any of us or any of our pets had to go through that, you'd think there'd be some disposition errors. The other problem with that breed that I think is really holding us back from making a change or recommending a change is that, and please, I know this is going to get me chopped up, that there are so many people that do not follow our rules on living in a society and living in a city and living around other people that have that breed. They choose that breed as their dog of choice. So it's one of those instances where it's just...
It's tied back to ownership.
It's really hard to judge a breed based on who its owner is, but in this case, it's almost the defining element, and that's, that's where, you know, and if the chief or anybody in here has anything else to, you know, yeah, Googling, you know, is not the best way to do stuff, but there's statistics out there, and they just show that that's a really tough breed when it comes to poor ownership, it's a high correlation, and poor ownership is what's getting us with these dogs that are out of control, that bite and chew up things that, you know...
And that reflects everything that I've, I've researched and have talked to other individuals about, that it's all tied back to ownership and what happens as that, as that dog is, is growing up, and I, I don't know that the breed's going to eliminate that. I mean, the change in the ordinance is going to eliminate that. I mean, that's still going to be an issue if we, if we change the ordinance and allow the other breeds to be included that aren't currently included. What do we do about that ownership piece? And if we don't have control over that enforcement piece now, or other cities are having that same issue, where does that leave us after we've made the change? I mean, and it's, and it's a difficult one because I have some people that have talked to me quite a bit about it and are pretty passionate about making the change, and I'm sure that they won't appreciate the fact that we're not making it, but it's, it's just challenging for me. I don't know that I have the information that provides me enough comfort to know that we'll be able to get over that ownership pump, even though that the disposition is not necessarily evil.
Right.
What the dog's used for and the ownership piece of it, it's just something that I just don't know, I just don't know what we can do about that.
Well, Darren, we had this conversation about this very issue recently, and I understand the passion of pet owners, I'm a dog owner myself, and I feel their, their pain when they came forward and talked about wanting their dogs allowed in, in our city. But I researched and what caused the ordinance in the first place was not the dogs, it was the irresponsible owners of the dogs that let the dogs run free years ago. They chewed on people, they chewed on other dogs, you know, and I understand they want to have temperament tests done, they want to have them spayed and neutered so they won't breed, and that's all well and good, but we have pit bulls in our city now that are there illegally. So it's not going to make any difference if we change the ordinance because the people that have them now illegally, they're not going to have them spayed and neutered, they're not going to have them temperament tested, and, you know, all it takes is one time that we change this ordinance, and if somebody's child gets mauled, and then who will that be on? I'm not in that position. I've had numerous calls, I know we had a lot of people that night come forward and want to change this, but a day or two after, I had that many calls of people wanting the ordinance left alone like it is. So that's where I'm at on it.
Yeah.
I think, I think I echo that. I've had family members attacked by the pit bull breed, and that's, that's one ordinance. I think even if you submitted ordinance wanting us to change it, I don't think I could vote for it.
Okay. Well, sorry it took me this long to get back with you, but it's, some things aren't easy, and some things not doing something is maybe the right thing to do, so appreciate all your comments, and, well, last thing is, on a good note, I think Jay turned 21 today or something, but there's, Jay Byers, our Susan City manager, there's a bunch of cupcakes back there, he's too sick to eat them, so if you don't eat one, carry two home with you, and happy birthday, Jay. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move. Second.
It's moved in second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Oh, geez.
We are adjourned.